Well, it's six oh four and I'll now call the June eighth meeting of the mayor and council to order. If you'll all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll remain standing with me and we're going to ask Mr. Jim Triplet to do our invocation.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we come to you tonight with grateful hearts. Father, we thank you for your mercy, your grace, your blessings on our country. Father, we thank you for being with us during the past months of trial, Lord, through the pandemic, Lord, all the other challenges that our country has been facing. Father, we ask you to continue to help us to keep our eyes lifted to you and the things of your kingdom. Father, we ask that for all of us everywhere, regardless of what our calling is in life, that you would help us to seek to serve you, to have humble servant hearts, and we just pray, God, that your perfect will would be done in all things. Father, we lift up this mayor and city council to you as they lead and direct our community. Father, the items of business that come before them today, God bless them, give them wisdom, discernment, and pray, God, that everything that is said and done would be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. And Father, we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jim, as always. Okay, our next item on the agenda is our citizens' comments. Do we have anybody that would like to make a comment to the mayor and council?
So, I knew this lady did.
All right.
I'm gonna say I've never been on this end of the stick before.
Well, welcome, Mr. Gerald.
Thank you very much. It's good to be here and thank you for, is this the first meeting y'all had since I officially, in person, since I left?
No.
Second, oh, well, I hadn't been in touch. But anyway, it's good to be back, good to see you all. Thank you for the work that you're doing in our community. Thank you for your presence and everything. I come here tonight representing a group called One Voice, Voice. I'm a member of One Voice and I'm one of their representatives. Tonight, I'd like to give everybody on this platform, both elected officials and non-elected officials who represent our city, an opportunity to give us their perspective and their point of view and their position on the Black Lives Matter initiative. If we could hear from everyone and then maybe an overall view from the city, the body as well. Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'm not sure exactly what you want.
Just tell them about your report and what your position is and maybe what you plan to do. Is it more targets?
Well, I think the city has already made a great stride and I want to appreciate our community for coming together and being heard. I think the protests that we had, was it a week ago, yesterday, was really good. I think the whole community came together and we listened. And yes, black lives matter. Every life matters. I think our police department does a great job of trying to interact. I know we've all heard, if you listen to community call in on Friday, you heard Chief Richards, Sheriff Langley, Pastor Dortch, all talk about all the things that are done in this city with our pastors, with our police department, and just with our community in general to try to get good communication. And I think that's the only thing that we can do, is to communicate. And I think we've made a very good position that we're willing and have listened. I mean, you know, we work, I have attended the pastors' meeting now going on for about two years, and it's a great group of people. And it, to me, it is One Voice. I mean, they, we all talk about the needs and how to meet those needs and what goes on. So, from the city's perspective, I mean, I think we've, we've set a good pattern. And, you know, we're always open to new things. And if it's something that's workable, if it's something that will help our community, I think we would all be very much in favor of it. So, that, that's my perspective of it, Gerald.
Can they speak for themselves?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, and, and let's, if you don't mind, let's stick to the, the whole, I guess, let's address police reform and what you're saying and addressing your support of Black Lives Matter. You did that, let's, let's just move on.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna kind of reiterate a little bit about what the mayor said concerning, I feel like that our city has done a better job than any other city that I, that I have seen on TV or heard about or read in the newspaper about. That our city has done more aggressively to have communication and to hear what people have to say than in any, than any other city that I know about personally. Personally, for me, I think black lives matter. I think white lives matter. I think every color and every race matters. We're all children of God. And, and I don't, you know, I have black friends and white friends and I have associates that I've done business with of all races and walks of life. And, you know, I don't see things like, like everybody, everybody's position in life, wherever they are, and whatever their personal experiences have been are gonna bring perspective for them about a certain situation. And for me, I grew up in a small, little three-bedroom, one-bath house on Myrtle Street, down here between Rome Street and North Park, that my parents rented for seventy-five dollars a month from Mr. A.L. Bonner. And until I was twelve years old, that's where we lived, that I can remember. That's the first memory I have of living anywhere in Carrollton. And it was very modest, you know, surroundings. And, and I've worked in the construction business for thirty-four years. And so, I've worked with a wide variety of people from all walks of life. I feel like that personally, I've had a great experience with the people that I've associated with. And I think that a lot of that comes because Carrollton is a, a city that cares about people and cares about what they have to say. Now, moving forward for me, I, I feel like that there's some relationships that I would like to, to have, you know, going forward. There's some people that I probably need to get to know that are leaders in the community that I don't know. And I'm perfectly willing to get to know them on a more personal basis. So, I think for me, that's, that's what I'm looking forward to doing and feel like that, that would be beneficial for me as well as those other community leaders.
And can all of us understand that we know all lives matter and they always have. And a lot of them always have mattered, but black lives haven't mattered. And that's what I'm concerned about.
Gerald, I don't agree with that. I, I do not agree with that.
Yeah.
I understand that. We're talking about, we're talking about a global issue here. I'm not, you may not agree with that. We're talking about how we feel. Don't argue with me about how I feel, okay? Because I'm, I'm a black person and I'm a black man. I'm not here to debate. I'm not here to argue. I just ask, what is your position on Black Lives Matter? That's, that's all I wanna, are you in favor of it? Are you against it? Can you make a public declaration declaring that the city of Carrollton stands with the Black Lives Matter Initiative and that you're going to reform the police department and continue to work with the citizens on many different levels for a resolution?
Can you give me a specific instance with our police department that, that's driven you to come here tonight to talk about how police reform needs to happen in our city?
I could give you that, but I'm not gonna give you that at this time. I wanna hear from you guys.
Okay. All right, well.
And I love, you know, I like you, we're really, you know, we've been friends and all that.
I, I understand that.
Yeah, I, I just wanna hear that.
And I'm not trying to tell you how you feel or how you should feel about it.
And that's been the problem, people telling me how I feel, you know?
I don't, I'm not trying to do that. I'm not trying to.
But you do understand that all lives have mattered all the time besides black lives. Black lives have not mattered. You understand that?
Well.
Worldwide, you understand? We, we worked for free. You understand that? My, my grandmother, my great-grandmother, they were all slaves.
Okay, Gerald.
They were hung.
I'm gonna say this and then I'm gonna be quiet.
Yeah, you, you've done a great job of saying what you needed to say.
I'm gonna say this and I'm gonna be quiet. You know, if you wanna debate.
And I don't.
You wanna have a, or if you wanna have a discussion, I'd be happy to do that with you, but I don't feel like this is the forum to do it.
Oh, really? So, you think the forum that I paid for is, as a taxpayer citizen, is not appropriate?
Gerald, because this is a, this is a forum where you have three minutes to bring up whatever.
And y'all have used up most of them rambling. Let's hear from the rest of the people.
I appreciate you being here, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Uglum.
I'm a sixty-four-year-old white male. I went to his very first.
Sorry. I went to my very first protest this past weekend. I'm now a protester.
Thank you.
And I stood next to Reverend Bell or Pastor Bell and his lovely wife and several other ministers and, and listened. And I'm trying to learn.
Yes, sir.
And I, I'd be the first one to denounce violence. I'm gonna denounce racism of any kind and do my best and try to promote loving each other. And if I see racism, I'm gonna say something about it. I'm gonna, a position, I think, here on city council is, if I see it, I'm gonna denounce it and I'll be vocal about it. But right now, I've just learned what black lives really means, you know, to be honest with you. And that's all I can do, is be honest and try to learn, be compassionate, have empathy, and try to learn.
Bob, I think you've given us the, the most solid answer tonight. You didn't argue with me. You didn't debate with me. You didn't become defensive. You gave a good, solid answer, saying that you're willing to. Can we move down to everybody else now?
Gerald, it's good to see you again.
It's always good to see you, Jim, and Bob. All y'all are good friends.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Oh, yeah, I'll just echo what, whatever one has said. I mean, we're all learning as we go and, and the older we get, hopefully, we're getting wiser about everything. So, yeah, I agree with, with the other, other three.
You agree with them on what?
And what's that?
You agree with them on what? And I, I can't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. I say I agree with them on everything that they've said.
So, so you're saying you will support Black Lives Matter initiatives?
I support all lives matter, Gerald. All lives matter.
Not black lives matter.
All lives matter.
Not black lives matter.
All lives matter.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Tim, thank you. It's always good seeing you. Always a pleasure. Tim?
How you doing?
Yeah, I'm doing fantastic.
Oh, you know, I would just wanna say, and I'm trying to express this to the mayor and council, I'm impressed I am with this police department. There are relationships that this police department has with the whole city that have taken decades to build and there's trust there that's taken decades to build. And I saw the protest on Sunday and Monday and the things that made, that certainly made Atlanta news and what a great job Carrollton did and I'm very proud of that. So, you know, I just think, again, the relationships Joel has built and his staff has built with the community have been great. I know that when you were on this council, I've always tried to respond anytime, day or night, anything you need. We've tried to take care of, you know, as you would call the West Side, your side of town, and we've tried to do that. So, I'm very proud of that. So, you know, again, that's, we've tried to do, try to be fair, try not to see color and just try to, try to respond to everybody's needs and hope. I, I was just looking at texts you sent me last week and you said, you know, thanks, my friend, or whatever, you know. You consider me a friend, I consider you a friend. So, that's, you know, that's what I.
Right. And thank you, thank you all for that. But, but let me end, 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 in closing. If you're having a party and everybody's not having fun, it's not fun. If everybody doesn't feel valued and everybody doesn't feel wanted, then the chain is weak, the circle is weak. It's not strong. Everybody doesn't feel wanted. Everybody doesn't feel a part of this. And all I was asking for is for you to say that you're open to it. This is a global issue, as I said before, and it's bigger than me. I'm just one little old, tiny, measly old, old man who's getting older every day. But I thank you for your time and just know that this is a global issue and it's a, and the world has heard our cry. I sat in that chair for a long time, trying my best to create racial equality up here. I'm not here to denounce the police. I'm not here to denounce the police. I'm not here to denounce the police. I can text Joel anytime now and he still responds and he still works with us. And I thank you guys for, but we still have a lot of work to do 'cause everybody's not having fun. Y'all understand that? Everybody doesn't feel a part of this. And I don't. Even when I sat in that chair, I didn't feel a part of it. I was hurting in that chair. And y'all know that. If you know me, you know that. And there's other people hurting as well. So, thank you, everybody. Thank you too. Did you wanna say something?
Thank you, Gerald.
It's okay, Gerald. Thank you, though. It was good to see you.
I'm one of the bosses now. Look at that. I'm a taxpayer. I was a taxpayer anyway. Good night, Bob.
Okay. Okay, the next person? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name's Dwayne Crowder. Longtime citizen of Carrollton. I grew up and raised here, went to school here. And my question kinda goes along with Mr. Bird as well. You know, I've been, first of all, as a young black male and I have a, a young son who's ten, and also worked at the school and I've coached a lot of kids. And so, when I, when I see George Floyd, I think of all the kids that I've coached. I think of all the friends that I got. And, and, and so, that's what I see when I see that video of George Floyd. And so, I've had an opportunity to go to Atlanta and be a part of the protests in Atlanta and, 'cause I wanted to experience it. And I wanted to see, you know, what I see on TV and what I see in person is the same thing. And what I saw was a, a lot of people of all races there supporting. And when, when it was time for the curfew at eight-thirty, everybody turned around and walked to their cars and left peacefully. And so, you know, and then watching TV, I've seen mayors and I've seen council members and I've seen different elected officials out with their community, supporting, talking, wanting to know their story. 'Cause I've been through it three or four times. And, and so, I can, I can attest to what, what it feels like to be stereotyped. And so, I know y'all don't know that feeling. And it sucks. I wanna know, why haven't I seen you out protesting? You don't have to be yelling and screaming. You don't have to be burning stuff down, but talking to the community, getting to know people. Listen to their stories. 'Cause it's real. And a lot of people sit back in our houses and we post on Facebook and we say, yeah, I support. But then, when this dies down, we're gonna go back to our normal lives. And it's still gonna be going on. Sixty years later, still going on. Too many people have died to just sit here and say, well, I support it and the police did this and we've done this. I wouldn't see that. I wanna see your face in the crowd. I want you to sit down and talk to people, knock on doors, hear their stories. So, maybe it'll mean a lot more to you. Instead of just sitting here having this meeting. It hurts 'cause I've experienced it. And I don't want my son to go through it. And I don't want the kids that I coach every day. I don't care what color they are. I'm gonna do for them a hundred percent. But I don't wanna get that phone call and find out a kid has been killed. I don't wanna get that phone call. So, I hope that after this, you go home and do some soul searching. I tell my kids this every day. Go home and look in the mirror and ask yourself, have you done enough? Did you do enough? And are you willing to do enough? And if you're not, then maybe you should ju, you, you need to decide if you wanna hold this position or not. And unfortunately, the black community, we haven't done enough. And I'll tell them that face to face. 'Cause when I go vote, I see the same names on the ballot every year. And everybody says, go vote, go vote, go vote. There's no other name on there to vote for. So, I have no choice but to vote for who's on there. So, it's time for the black community as well to start making a change. And I'll be the first to lead it. But y'all are our voice. There's some things that you can do that I can't do. There's people you can call that I can't call. And we vote and we, and we elect y'all to be our officials and be leaders of this city. People call this the city of dreams. At some points, I'm embarrassed to be from it. 'Cause when, when the TikTok video came out, everybody, the city was on board, posting Facebook updates and the city is not this and we're not this. And then soon as the George Floyd incident happened, Ahmaud Arbery happened, quiet, nothing. I seen nothing on Facebook. I didn't see anybody in the crowd. We had a protest at the amp and I seen a couple of cops. I seen Chief Richards, but I didn't see any of you. So, how can I trust that you're gonna make the right decision so my son doesn't get killed? That's all I got to say. If, if you have a response, that's fine.
I didn't, I didn't get your name.
Dwayne Crowder.
Dwayne, did I see you somewhere this weekend?
Uh, I was at the amp on, well, I can't remember what day it was, Sunday or Saturday, but I'm not sure.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking Saturday.
Yes.
Did I see you Saturday?
You probably did in the distance. I, I didn't meet you, though.
I was thinking at a, uh, at Carrollton High School at the Mayberry Center.
Uh, no, I wasn't there recently, no.
Well, I was at a funeral for a, a black man, friend of mine.
A minority family to me. He's.
Who's been a friend of mine for thirty years.
Right.
And, uh, while I was a minority there in skin color, I was loved. And there was a lot of love to go around in that room. And unity is gonna be how we progress, not by division. And I don't know if you knew Bernard, but Bernard was one of the most, you've got it written on your shirt. He was one of the most humble and kind people I've ever met. And, you know, my prayer would be, Lord, help us all be a little bit more like Bernard, humble, kind, and, and listen and care about other people. And you got three new people up here that have not been on city council or mayor before. So, if I could speak for all of us, I'm sure everybody says, you know, call us. You know, all you gotta do is look up City Hall on the website and you can call us or email us. Facebook's probably not the best avenue to, to discuss things. Avenue to, to discuss things, but feel free and thanks for being here tonight.
I'd like to say this is my first ever meeting coming to. My grandmother told me, Joe Burris should tell me, come to the meetings. And I always say, I can't make it. I'm at the school, I'm coaching, I got a game, my kids, I gotta feed dinner. And so, that's my fault. And I speak for, I can't speak for everybody else, but I can speak for myself and they say, that's my fault. I should have been here.
Hey, thanks for being a good dad and a good coach.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Dwayne, I'd like to get to know you a little bit better. Um, if, if, um, I won't let you yell out your phone number, but maybe give it to Jaclyn or Erica or, or Jaclyn or Erica or somebody and let's, I want to talk to you and maybe go to lunch or something because I, I feel you, man. And, and what you just said was from the heart. I want to talk to you. I mean, well, let's leave it at that.
All right. Okay. Um, I believe, yes ma'am. Okay. You need to come to the microphone.
Hi guys. Um, my name is Ariel and, uh, no doubt, some of you might have already heard my name before because I've been emailing you for weeks and I've never had a response. And I started emailing you weeks ago, well, really it's been a few months ago, when that racist TikTok video went viral and I pleaded with you guys to do something, to say something, to make more of a statement than that Facebook post that was just a really bad apology in my opinion. We have a problem because we just had two black men stand in front of you and ask you how you felt about Black Lives Matter and none of you could give him a definitive answer without tacking on that all lives matter or that you have a black friend. All of this talk needs to be backed up with performative, like, action. I went on the Carrollton website and I noticed that in our budget for the general funding, out of $28.6 million, 8.5 million of that is going towards police funding and we only have a million allotted for community development. It is the most funded institution on that budget. That's a problem. If you're listening to the world right now, you'll realize that that's a problem. In what ways could we reimagine the way that we're spending that funding? How could we reallocate the funding to other programs and areas of need to strengthen our communities that would limit the need for police involvement to an absolute minimum? Because of the long history of violence within law enforcement, their very presence in situations can warrant tension and escalation. When I found out that this meeting was going to be at the police department, I was like, wow, that's why people don't show up. It's scary to certain groups of people. According to the Georgia Public Safety Training Center's website, the state of Georgia has what is, in my opinion, a very lax set of requirements that candidates pursuing basic police training must meet. Candidates must only be 18 years of age, possess a high school diploma or equivalent, pass a background check and complete a training program that only lasts approximately 11 weeks. I would like to point out that this, in the state of Georgia, a licensed cosmetologist is required to complete 1,500 hours of training. And according to, um, GPTC, which is the top police officer training program in the state of Georgia, their program only exists, I'm sorry, their program only consists of 408 hours. We train people to ha, cut hair longer than we train police. What we need to create in our community is an environment that prioritizes care over cops. It is oftentimes said that crime is committed because basic needs are not being met. How are we not meeting basic needs in Carrollton? We need to invest in job creation, affordable housing and shelters, access to healthcare, mental health services, addiction counselors, social workers, trauma support networks, therapists, educator, education, after-school programs, small businesses, neighbors, families and friends, all of those who are people who would actually be making up the communities and neighborhoods that they would be servicing. 8.5 million dollars is a lot. So, I'm asking you guys, how would you reach out to impacted people in the community and talk with them about solutions? I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ariel. Let me tell you something. We, um, those may be the training hours to require to come onto the force, but we, out of that 8.5 million dollars that you sell for the police department, a lot of that money is spent on training. We train police officers every day. They specialize in lots of different areas. So, the mandated school is not their only, um, is not their only training that they receive. They receive training on a continual basis while they're employed with the city of Carrollton. And you can ask Chief Richards. He thanked us the other day for, um, training that he could give to his officers, which was ready and available to take care of a situation like, uh, that we have anytime in our city, no matter what it is. Now, the other thing that you saw on community development, um, that is not necessarily programs in the community. That is our buildings and, uh, development and those kind of things. That's not. Carroll County Mental Health Advocacy Program provides mental health for people in jail. We're trying to get people out of jail. I serve on that board. There are a lot of things that go on in this community that people aren't aware of and we've worked very hard over the years to get people more aware of services that are available. So, um, you know, and, and there's always room for improvement. So, we have been on this council now for, this is our sixth month. Two and a half months in, we got hit with a pandemic, which we have dealt with on a day-to-day basis. And our police officers have gone out into the community and have met the needs of the community by taking food to people. They have worked with people who needed healthcare and taken medication to them. So, our police department does a lot of things other than just patrol the streets. But if, if, you know, and, and I know that, you know, I invite you to come and just sit down and talk with Chief Richards sometimes to see what all our police department really does in our community. We are very blessed in this community to have people that care about people. I was the probate court judge for 22 years before I became the mayor and I had elderly people who would only let a certain police officer bring them groceries. So, there's a lot that our police department does other than just, um, you know, but, but we, we're aware that there's issues and we work diligently to address those issues. But there again, you know, we have to have input from the community to help us address those issues. Okay.
Madam Mayor, would you mind if I addressed the funding? Because I think it'll make you feel a lot better about how we do spend our money. We spend approximately 6 million a year on our recreation department and that prob, that department does a lot of good in every area in the community, particularly the poorer areas. They, they provide programs to make sure those kids have something to do and good things for them and, and good structure. Uh, we spend about a million, again, these are approximate numbers, on our arts center. And so, that's arts in the community and that, and that, they work with a lot of children in the area. We spend approximately a half million dollars on our downtown. We spend hundreds of thousands on our seniors. So, again, as, as Mayor Casey said, that community development number, that's actually a department that police is, uh, develop or install, you know, if they're building a McDonald's or if they're building a subdivision, that sort of thing. So, that, that title may be a little bit confusing, but there are millions and millions and millions of dollars spent. And then within the police department, I, I don't think there's a department we have other than maybe the rec department that reaches out to the community more than the police department. I've ridden with Chief Richards, he's sitting back by the door there now, where they, some of the things are as simple as just giving out tokens and giving out spinners to kids so the kids will feel good about police and know they're, uh, they're friendly and that they're a friend. Uh, there's a citizens' police academy that they run. Joel, is it once a month?
Once a year, January 3rd.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm sorry. But, but it lets the community come in and see what police do and how difficult their job is and it goes on for weeks. Uh, there is a, uh, an explorer camp they do so that kids can come in and be with the police officers and see what they do. So, there's a lot done, a lot of money spent, uh, to reach out to the community. And again, as, as, uh, Mayor Casey said, I would encourage you to talk to Chief Richards. I really think you'll be very pleased. Uh, the good results that we had last week were not by accident. That was decades of, of, uh, time and money invested in building relationships with everybody in this town. So, again, don't let, you know, one budget line item fool you. There's a lot in there and it all goes to the community. And so, I hope y'all see that.
Okay, Bob.
Ariel, uh, thanks for being here tonight and, uh, sharing your thoughts with us. I, I, I just would reiterate that the, the citizens' police academy, which I'm in the middle of going through for my first time and, and, uh, it's a great program and it's, it's an eye-opener. So, I highly encourage you to go through that. I believe you also have the opportunity to ride with a regular policeman and see, see how they do things. As to, uh, the Black Lives Matter question, there's a handful of people in this room that were at the Unity March yesterday up on the square. And one of them's a great guy sitting right next to you there, but, but there's another great guy all the way at the back of the room, our chief of police, and he, he was dressed just like he is today, you know, I'm sure he had a different shirt on, but he was there with his, his, his wife and his child, just like a lot of other people were. And, uh, you know, we've all got a lot to learn.
All right. Here is our, do we have someone else who wanted to address?
Hi. Um, my name's Arizona Green and it's nice to meet some of y'all in person. I know Mr. Griswold, we talked on the phone last semester when I was at school. Um, and I've gone to school with a lot of you guys as kids and I miss the better.
You say your name again, please.
Arizona Green. Sorry, I guess I need to talk more to the line.
Tell me your grandfather's name, I'm just real blank.
Sam Price. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Um, and I'm up here, I guess in solidarity with other people who have spoken tonight, wanting to talk about similar things, um, which is that I am very, very proud to be from Carrollton. I grew up here and, um, I just graduated from Yale last spring and people used to make fun of me at school because all I would ever talk about was Carrollton and where I'm from. And I spent four years bringing people from all over the world, from all over the US, who had never been to the South before because they were told that they shouldn't come here because I've always loved this town. And, um, so basically, I just wanted to kind of talk about the Confederate memorial that we have in front of the courthouse. Because I think that reckoning with history is very important, but also thinking about, um, what we're doing when we set up a monument and what the values are that we're representing and showing other people that we have. Because I know that the Civil War is a nuanced history and people, um, like to talk about and debate the nuance of it, but there is a reality that the Confederacy did fight for slavery, the enslavement of black people. And to continue to, um, to memorialize and place a structure in front of our courthouse, which is the place where everybody comes and expects to be treated equally under the law, um, is very darkly ironic. And that's something that multiple members of our community, including a descendant of Confederate soldiers, pointed out at a vigil the other night in front of the courthouse on Saturday. That was in honor of lives lost to police brutality. And so, um, I wanted to bring it up tonight because this is a conversation that's happening across the United States. Many towns and cities are choosing to remove monuments and put them in places where they are important and museums and in other places where we learn about our history and we reckon with it in a way that we can learn from it. Um, and this is a conversation that's happening in our town. It's happening in Gallery Row. It's happening in group messages between friends who can't gather together because of the pandemic. And I wanted to bring it up to invite the city council in the city of Carrollton to be in that conversation because I think it's something that isn't going to go away and that we'll find starts coming up a lot in the near future. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Okay. Is that everyone that wanted to have public comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, barely.
Is your mic on?
Okay. Can, can you try again?
Hi. My name is Alicia Grejci. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Um, I just wanted to call in and just, I've, I've never been to a city council meeting and I was really excited when I saw this published on Facebook because I was thinking, wow, I can call in and I can have my opinion heard just like so many other people that have spoken today. And I wanted to just say that in light of what's happening around our country and as people are protesting and mourning, I think that you, Carrollton is in a unique position where we can be proactive rather than reactive. We see the police are marching with our own people and having these conversations and, you know, we're, we're regarding them as doing great jobs of continuing the conversation about Black Lives Matter. But I think that a show of visibility of how the city council and how the police force in our community can come together and create active plans and be performative in our actions and making changes to show our fellow West Georgians what we can do to make our blacks and people, and the people of color in our community feel more welcome. And that's all I wanted to say today, but I'm, thank you for letting me call in, letting me be heard.
Thank you for calling. Okay. Any other public comments? One public comment I want to make is I want everybody to be aware that we are having free COVID-19 tests done in our community. Today, it was done at Morris Chapel United Methodist Church. Tomorrow, it will be at Our Lady of Perpetual Help Catholic Church from, and that's out on, um, 210 Old Center Point Road, uh, and that's from 9:00 to 3:00. Wednesday, it will be June the 10th, uh, from 9:00 to 3:00 at the First Baptist Church of Carrollton and this is out on Old Bremen Road. Monday, June 15th, uh, it'll be from 9:00 to 3:00 at Mount Prospect Baptist Church and that's on Thomas Dorsey Drive in Villa Rica. And then on June 16th, it's going to be at Pleasant Grove Missionary Baptist Church and that's East Highway 5, um, I'm sorry, Rootville. Um, and then on Wednesday, June 17th, it's going to be at the, um, from 9:00 to 3:00 at the Clem Community Center and that's at the courtesy of Pastor Vincent George of Antioch Baptist Church. Pleasant Grove Missionary Baptist Church is courtesy of Pastor Frederick Ricks. Uh, Prospect, Mount Prospect Baptist Church is courtesy of Pastor James E. Potts and Dr. Bernice Brooks. The First Baptist Church of Carrollton is courtesy of Reverend Dr. Woodrow Johnson, Jr. And then, um, tomorrow's, uh, at the Catholic Church is courtesy of, um, Latino United of Carroll County. And today was at the courtesy of Reverend Edward Landrum. And I just want to let everybody know how much I appreciate the Department of Health working with us and getting this done. It's going to be throughout the county. There'll be two days that'll be done here in the city. So, um, and this is free. So, if you want to get tested, then, you know, please, please visit. So if you want to get tested, then, you know, please, please visit one of these sites. Okay. We have the minutes from our May 4th and May 14th meeting. So we have those distributed to you. Do you, do I have a motion? That you've read those, and is there any corrections or additions to those?
Mayor Casey and I'd make a motion if the minutes be approved.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay. So the minutes from May 4th and May 14th are hereby adopted. Okay. The mayor and council announcement comments. I just want to say that we have listened and we hear, and, you know, we might not have been out on the front lines, but I can assure you, we have been talking to people. We have been working through the community, and this is important to our community. And I am willing, and I think these guys are willing, you know, to continue these. But it has to be organized. And I think what Chief Richards has done with our pastor's luncheon has really worked well in getting out and all the other activities that we do in the community. But there's always room for improvement, and we will take your suggestions and try to make them work. And that, I mean, that's all we can do. We don't have all the answers. If we did, we wouldn't be sitting here. But anyway, I think all in all, our communities work well together. It doesn't matter what part of the city you live in. But I just, I want these people who have suggestions and want things changed to make those suggestions to us, and we will take those under advisement. So, Councilman, do you have any comments you want to make at this time?
I'd just reiterate that I thought I was very proud of our city's response last Monday The police handled that situation very well, and the citizens of Carrollton handled it very well. I'd like to thank everybody that went to the protest yesterday. Pastor Bell, I was saying it was the first time I've ever protested. It was quite an experience.
Do you look, continue to read that, give the kind words to that, please?
Yes.
So you would like to go to the council and walk back and pray with us? Do you think something could happen in Carrollton?
And I'd like to thank the Carrollton firemen that were at the COVID-19 screening today. You know, how great to have them up there, so.
I think I'd just like for everybody to understand something. I've lived in Carrollton all my life. And this place is very important to me. And sometimes when I feel like I'm being attacked or Carrollton is being attacked, I may not respond in the proper way. And I apologize for that if I've done that here tonight. But I feel like, and I said this before, I know of a lot of things that go on in our community where people are trying really hard to be more accepting of others. People are trying very hard to communicate with other people. Everything that needs to be done, of course, has not been done. I think we will have the same conversation 10, 15, 20 years from now, that there are still things that we could do better. But I am, I'm going to lean towards being defensive of my city that I love so much because I feel like that above and beyond, a lot of cities that I know of, we try very hard in our community, and we have a police department that tries very hard in our community. And so I'm going to be a little defensive at times about Carrollton. My mother was born and raised here. Several generations of people prior to her were born and raised here in Carrollton. And so if I've sounded a little defensive tonight, especially dealing with our former Councilman Gerald Byrd, that's going to be the reason, is I feel like that Carrollton and the community of people that I know have tried very hard to do a good job. And I think all those that came before me. And if there's a relationship that I need to, that I need to cultivate, I would appreciate someone reaching out to me, and we'll start that relationship. And we'll get to know each other, and if there's ways that I can help you, I'm perfectly willing to do that. I would like to say that I appreciate all the efforts of the city employees that have been made during some very different times over the last three months. You may not know this, but the city of Carrollton provided the landscaping for our new library. It looks great. I'm very proud of that department and what they did over there. And there's always something going on in our community that the city employees and city staff are doing to help people. I saw it today. I've seen it last week. So yeah, I'm a Carrollton boy, and I'm going to defend Carrollton as much as I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Jim?
Yeah, I'd just like to say right quick that there's, in my opinion, there is, with all the angst and anger that's in the world, in America, that it really, in this whole race issue, it really, to me, is a heart issue, as in your heart and it's got to be, if it's ever going to be solved, and because it's a heart issue, that means it's a sin issue. And if it's ever going to be solved, that means you have to get rid of sin. And sin in people's hearts is not going to be solved by a mayor and council or a police department anywhere. It's going to get solved in our churches and synagogues. And so Pastor Bell, I certainly appreciate you being here, sir, and all the work you've done in our community to help bring us all together. And MLK Day was a great event, and the monument we put out there, you guys raised money for and put out there was awesome. So there's, I'm sort of like Brett. I'm proud of, I'm proud of a lot of the things that the city does. I know we're not perfect, and we're willing to listen to any complaints people have got. But just don't, my, I'm asking for y'all to understand and have a little sympathy on us, that there's only so much that a government can do to solve a sin issue. But we're here to listen to anything you've got, and if there's things that we're missing, let us know, and we'll try our best to fix them. But let's get rid of, let's get rid of the sin. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Waters? Okay. Mr. Griswold?
This is a little more mundane topic, but something I heard loud and clear from this council when they took office in January, is that you want this town cleaned up from a standpoint of codes enforcement. And you'll find in your package this document, which is a list of blighted houses, that we're trying to either have the owner repair or we're going to demolish. And that is a very complicated issue. Sometimes we have to take people to court. Sometimes we have difficulty finding out who even owns these properties. But I just want you to know, we have a task force meeting every Monday at 9:00. You're welcome to attend. And this is our list of blighted houses. The sheet behind it is a list of houses that we, that are going to be demoed by our staff. And then the last report in your departmental reports shows 39 either citations or letters or warnings that were sent to people about cleaning up their properties and cutting their grass and that sort of thing. So I just, I want you to know that, Sarah. I want you to know, seriously, we take that. And nothing ever happens quickly. I wish it could, but people have rights and they should. Property owners should have rights. But it's a little more complicated than we want it to be sometimes. But I just want you to know how hard we're working on that problem. So, and if you know of properties that we don't have on there, please let us know, and we'll attack those also.
Jim, can I ask you a question? Can you address the difficulty of maintaining other people's properties? The mayor and city council have been contacted by people that are really concerned about private companies or individuals' yards maybe not being maintained. And can you, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. And again, what we can do is cite them. We have to give them so many days, and at some point, they have to go before a judge. We can find them. If they want to fight that, that takes time and has to go before the municipal court judge. There are provisions in there where we can cut the grass for them and lean the property. We try to avoid that. There's at least one development in the area where it, we just, frankly, we have to send prisoners in there to maintain it, and we've added a charge to their water bill. So it is a complicated issue. And again, there are private property rights, and so we do our very best. And if there's a property that you don't think we're giving proper attention, please let us know. And like I said, this is the list of, I think Erica got with the police and said, give us your list, and their list was pretty much the same as ours. I know you had property, I know every one of you had properties. And some of those, you know, Mella Mushroom was one, and we got it taken down quickly because it was a friend that would do it. I know there are other ones out there that have taken a lot more time to do anything with. And again, there are some where, frankly, the person that lived there is dead, their children are dead, and their grandchildren don't know they own it, and we don't know who all the grandchildren are. And so that gets extremely messy looking for owners across the country. And so there's, it is not, it's just not a simple, as simple as it sounds.
Right. Well, I hope our friends in the media, this is something we really are concerned about that, you know, while we're spending millions of dollars on a beautification project coming into Carrollton, there's things that we are addressing also that are probably a little easier and quicker to address that need to be. The blighted properties, the houses that are falling down. So we haven't come up with an official name or objective for this, but you know, if it's Beautify Carrollton or Love Your City, you know, I don't know what it needs to be called or if it needs to be called anything, but we are on that bandwagon.
Yeah.
I like Love Your City, too.
And just know, your predecessors voted and authorized us, and you can change this if you like, obviously. But to actually spend money, if a property owner will allow us, we'll take it down. And it probably costs $7,000 to do that. There's usually asbestos involved, and there's the cost of the demo, and there's the cost of landfilling the material when it's over. But, so it, we've spent, and I would say, and Haley can answer, there's probably 30 to 40 we've torn down. Does that sound right?
Well, I think, you know, and we all kind of ran on this in our campaigns, and we, I'll say this, we came in and we were getting, we got the blighted housing ordinance passed, and we're ready to go and get spring cleanup done, and then COVID hit. So we're, but we haven't forgotten about it. But I think people, you know, you have a lot of pride in your community. I mean, I live on Stewart Street, and I, you know, I notice, you know, there's been several, several houses on that street that have really, you know, taken up some issues. And I see one of the property owners here, and they always do a great job in maintaining their property. And I mean, you know, it's just a lot of pride. I mean, you know, in your yard and in your house. And, you know, so I think, and I know, last meeting we had, and I read you the letter from the young lady who was very concerned. She was a Carrollton Elementary student, and she was very concerned about the beautification in our community. So, yeah, I think everybody wants to have pride in our community, and we can work on that, and we're in the process. Okay. Any other comments? All right. To get to our agenda items, do I have a motion for approval of the agenda items that's been presented? Okay.
Hang on.
Oh, okay.
Adam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we add something to the agenda this evening. I'd like for us to add a executive session at the end of our meeting to discuss some employment.
Personnel.
Personnel issues. And so if we could add that, I would make a motion that we add that.
Okay. All right. I had a motion to approve, so do you want to withdraw your motion? Okay. All right. So now we have a motion to add an executive session for discussion of personnel. Do I have a second to that motion and to approve all the other agenda items as presented?
Mayor Casey and I'll make a second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none, motion carries for the approval of our agenda. The first item on our agenda is a site plan amendment request for 125 Maple Crossing. And at the request of the applicant, they would like for this item to be continued and remain tabled. Does anybody have any objection to that occurring?
No.
Okay. All right. Okay. So our next item will be rezoning of 1,000 Old Bremen Road, rezoned from M1 Light Industry to Heavy Industry. And we have Mr. Todd Levy, and this is going to be presented by Erica Studdard.
The, I guess the second item on your agenda is a rezoning request. I wanted to briefly go through this. I know we talked about this at your work session, but the request is to take an existing storage facility and just expand that storage facility. Self-storage facilities are allowed in both M1 and M2. However, there are some acreage requirements in M1 that don't exist in M2. And they would like the ability to expand because they are just at one acre. The Planning Commission may review this request in, oh goodness, it's been May. And they recommended approval of this. Along with this request, the petitioner would like to also have a reduction of the front yard setback, a waiver of the front yard setback along Ackland Drive from 40 feet to 37 feet, as shown on the submitted site plan, in order to make the expansion that are, the expansion that's proposed. The proposed expansion site plan is in your packets, and I believe the petitioner is here to answer any questions, should you have any additional questions.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? I think you were able to look at that on the, or was able to look at that on the screen? Do I have a motion to?
You need to let anybody oppose.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anybody here that opposes the rezoning of 1,000 Old Bremen Road? Is there anybody here that opposes the rezoning of 1,000 Aubrey Monroe from M1 to M2? Okay. Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the rezoning?
I'm moved.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Okay. All right. Mr. Levy, your property has been rezoned. Okay. And our next item is item three, special use permit for 136 North Park Street to allow food truck court. And the petitioner is Mr. Curtis Wilson.
I was actually checking with Faith. Is he out there?
I don't know. We have four.
Okay. And the next item on your agenda is a rezoning request, I mean, I'm sorry, a special use permit request by Curtis Wilson on behalf of the property owner, Morris Chapel United Methodist Church, to allow for a special use permit at 136 North Park Street for a food truck court in the C2 General Commercial Zoning District. The Planning Commission reviewed this request last month, and their recommendation was approval contingent with the following conditions. One, that the food truck court is limited to three mobile food units and/or food trucks because the parking lot is not very big. And number two, all participating vendors shall make a contribution to Morris Chapel United Methodist Church or another local nonprofit entity. I do believe that the petitioner is here. You also received at your, at your place setting, there were some email responses that they wanted to give public input, but they decided to email their responses in. I do believe the petitioner is here as well, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Erica. All right. Does anybody have any questions?
The hours are clearly outlined, that, that they can operate, and the days and the time?
Yes.
Yes.
If you want to speak? If it's approved, I would have to say yes. Thank you, sir.
We voted, yeah. Come on up.
I know Rich Weaver said to me before the meeting, he wanted to speak, so.
My concern is, I own a couple businesses downtown. My concern would be that we don't get it, let it get too broad, so everybody with a food truck out of anywhere in Alabama or Georgia comes. I pay rent, insurance, every utility possible downtown. Food truck doesn't have that, per se. I'm not against it, free enterprise, but as long as we, it's controlled to who, when, how, and supports Carrollton, you know? Because I got to feed my family, too.
Thank you.
So if it's controlled to manage, I have nothing against it, but I don't want a food truck at midnight on the square, or in the parking lot across the street from here, those type of things.
I don't leave the ridge, so we're on the side.
We're on the side.
It comes from brick and mortar. Downtown is downtown, and it's controlled, you know, much like everything else. We don't want barbecue truck coming in, back of some guy's pickup truck trying to sell this, you know?
Yeah.
It's controlled with some standard criteria.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate your comment, and, you know, this is a new era for us.
Sure.
And it's been one of those things where we are definitely going to look at our requirements and work on what we need to do and what we want to do and to protect the downtown. But I, you know.
I've seen some in other cities, and it's, it's fun to go to and enjoy when the food's great, but to a point, you know, I don't want to strangle the businesses that thrive on that day-to-day business, you know?
We understand, and we don't either. Uh huh.
Thank you, Rose.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Sir, did you want to speak to the food truck issue?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
How are you doing, everybody?
Good.
My name is Sam Lee, and I run the Blue Nomad Grill.
I'm sorry, can you, you say your name again?
Sam Lee.
Okay.
I own the Blue Nomad Grill.
Okay.
I've been operating about two years now. Thank you. I usually run my food truck out of town. You know, I do a lot of breweries and wineries around, and all the caterings. But since COVID-19 hit, I decided to stay inside Carrollton. And I think I got some complaints about me being close to the square, so City Hall had told me that I was breaking the rules. But when I first got my food truck, Marshall came and inspected my truck, and he told me to come down to City Hall, which I did. And they told me that the applications were not ready yet, and that they would give me a call when it was ready. Well, I never got that call, but then I got told with a piece of paper that I was breaking zoning rules. Basically, you know, I don't want to step on anybody's toes, I don't want to fight any, any other restaurants. I didn't want to bring my food truck, you know, inside the city, but sometimes I do a lot of events with other small businesses that need some exposure. So I have a thousand-plus followers that follows my food truck around. If I can help a small business park in their parking lot and sell food that day, and then go into that small business, you know, and spend money on that one, I think everybody wins, you know?
Well, and I agree, and I think, you know, special events and those kind of things, I, they're, I, to my knowledge, and like, you know, I've been, well, I've lived here for a long time, but I mean, I don't think there's ever been a problem with food trucks. And like I said, it's a new era for us, and it's something new that we're getting into. And we will work on this to make sure that we give everybody a fair service. So it's, it's not that, I don't think that we're against food trucks, especially for special events. I mean, that it's been great. So we just got to work out a little more of the details so that we can have what we need when we need it, and where, for everybody.
Right.
For the, you know, the downtown restaurants, and, and, you know, the outskirts and the community where there, there may not be restaurants.
So. Yeah.
We're definitely going to look at all of that.
Yeah, I understand that, too. You know, I go to a bunch of other cities, and Carrollton is, this is my hometown, this is where I want to present my food truck at. But I've been having to go out of town, and other cities welcome me. You know, other cities have paid for me to get my inspection done, just because they want me there once a week, you know? And it just seems like it's really difficult to complete the application process for here. For Light Industries, it's really easy. It's only a page and a half application, I pay a hundred fifty dollars a year, I'm good with that. If you guys come up to me and say, "Hey, look, pay a thousand dollars a year, here's a small application fee," you know, and just stay, you know, five blocks away from historical downtown, that way I can go to Belks and Lowes when they offer me, and when they call me. I don't just go there on my free will and just, "Hey, I want to try to make some money today." I only go there because I've been invited.
Yes, sir. I understand.
Yeah.
We're definitely going to look at our process.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it, everybody.
I got a quick, before you step down.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I appreciate the fact that you're an entrepreneur, and we want to be a, definitely want to be a business, business-friendly city. But I wanted to clarify that, I mean, because Betty said it's, it was kind of new to us, which it is, but it's not like a week, a week old. We've had this, our food truck ordinance for two years, I believe, 2018. So it's, it's been on the books for a couple of years now, and I just wondered, because you said you can go to other cities and they pay for your fees and stuff, may, I mean, I went up to, I'm not looking for a debate, I want to learn. So maybe you can get with Erica, I think you know Erica, and, and talk to her about what other cities are doing that we're not doing.
Yeah.
That's, it's so great, because, again, an ordinance can be changed, and if we're doing something that's wrong, or, or not business, not business-friendly, then we'll certainly look at it.
Yeah, I would love to get together with her and discuss it. Bremen just opened their arms to me, too, and they're, they actually researched Savannah and Atlanta, and it's just a small application fee with a peddler's fee. And a lot of times, all we do is pay peddler's fee.
When you say small, are you talking five dollars, or?
A small, you know.
Ours is a hundred and fifty, right?
Fifty to a hundred dollars.
I'm sorry?
Fifty to a hundred.
And ours is one fifty, so you're thinking, ours is higher than, okay.
Mm-hmm. I mean.
Fifty to a hundred versus?
I wouldn't mind if you guys told me I had to pay a thousand dollars a year. I, I mean, as long as the paperwork is right, it's, it's easy. That's, that's the thing, is, is, it makes it easy. The application for the food truck now is so long, and, you know, and the process is very long. It takes, you know, two, three months before it gets approved. I mean, by that time, you know, a whole summer's wasted.
Yeah.
You know? But, you know, on the other hand, as well, I had an opportunity to open a restaurant, you know, but I chose to do a food truck because I wanted to travel around. And, you know, to the guys who are complaining about me, I told them, "Do you want me to be your competition once, or once a week, or once every other week? Or do you want me to open a restaurant and be your competition six days a week?" You know? I mean, I, I tried to stay as friendly as I could with everybody else. And I got a lot of, a lot of restaurant owners here that loves my food, and I love their food, too. You know, we support each other, we're small businesses.
Right.
You know? And on my days off, I will go eat there, support each other.
We, we got rules, so.
Yeah.
Got to follow the rules until we change the rules.
Yeah.
And you were breaking the rules weeks ago, and I don't know if you admit to, or knew that we even had rules on the books, but.
No, I didn't mean to.
We had to stop it.
I, I do everything by the books, I pay my.
You were, you were aware of the ordinance.
I wasn't aware of the, the particular ordinance, because when I, when the Marshall came and inspected me, he told me to come down here. I did come down here. And they said they didn't have nothing ready for me to fill out or to sign, you know? So I just left it alone, and like I said, I've been out of town most of the time. It's just when COVID-19 hit, I decided to stay in town to support my local people.
Hey, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Aren't you a Marine?
No, sir. I got two boys that are Marines.
Oh, hey, that's great.
Yes, sir.
Well, we're on your side, and I think if, if you could get with Erica, and we'd be happy to work with you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You're, you're live on the mayor and council meeting. Please state your name and address, please. Hello? Okay. All right.
We got hijacked there.
Yeah, did.
Hello. So I'm Curtis Wilson. I heard, what's his name, Richard? I heard Richard, and then I heard Sam, which owns the food truck, so. How do you guys feel about the food truck court? I've done, filled out all the paperwork and went through all the procedures in order to open up the food truck court. And, you know, one day I want to be like Richard. And right now, I have to start. I don't, okay. Well, I think, okay, I think I want to move down there on the square, okay? I think that. But, you know, that's one of the things that, that, that we in the community like about the food truck. You know, it, it's the fact that it gives a person like me an opportunity to get in business, or find out if I can be successful in business, and not go and borrow a hundred thousand dollars, or eighty thousand dollars, and find out that didn't work. I don't know if you read the article in the paper about the food truck court. So a little bit about my past is, I've been working with ESPN probably the last ten years, done corporate transportation the last ten years, and I've had a pretty nice quality of life, because that's allowed me to live a quality of life. And I've seen a lot, and I've done a lot. But one of the things when I travel, I like the food. Because some people can probably tell it. And food has always been plan B. But I've always, always taken pride in being self-sufficient. So I have not received a paycheck since March the 5th. That's because the virus hit, transportation stopped, I hadn't paid any church tithes, and I haven't had a lot of money to spend on my family. My wife was ill three years ago, she had to quit work. And I have a daughter in college. But now there's a way that I can still provide for myself and my family. There are people that I've done business with, that I spend money with. They say, "Well, hey, you know what? You spend money with me, I'll buy a fish sandwich from you." You know, "You spend money with me, I'll buy a fish sandwich from you." And it's recycling that money. I do not have to go and ask Chuck, "Chuck, can I hold two hundred dollars to pay my water bill?" I don't have to ask the church, "Can I have five hundred dollars to go towards my house note?" Why? Because I can find an opportunity to provide for me, myself, my family, and my community. So I've been working on this project for over a year. Another girl is not here, Destiny is not here.
I guess not. She's not busy.
Well, I've been dealing with Destiny for over a year. Can I do this? Can I do this? Can I do this? Can I do that? Everything was no, 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 no. Are you the lady I went and sat? So I finally got to her desk. She says, "Okay, you know, you can do this, and you can do this." And I ran into a hiccup, and I got to her desk, and I was on the phone over an hour with her. She says, "Okay, let me look at something, okay, you can do this." So the point is, I'm trying to take care of myself, and I want to quote something here that hopefully you guys will take with you. I didn't go to college, I went to Hard Knocks University. Now, the school of Hard Knocks, they teach you theories just like they teach you at West Georgia. But one theory I learned a long time ago at Hard Knocks University is called the one-man-one-ass theory. If every man takes care of his own ass, we're good. But the other girl, she went to Harvard.
Was it Yale?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so she learned different theories, too.
They have a similar theory.
Okay, gotcha. So for me, I've always looked at how I can provide for myself, and at the same time, the dream and goal was, with transportation, was to do Super Bowl, Final Four, World Series. I worked for Kirk Herbstreet every weekend. I've done Super Bowls, Final Fours, Masters, so that has worked. The next thing is, how do I become Richard? Okay, so now that there's no transportation, I have to start at the bottom and work my way up again, without asking anybody for anything. So that's my spiel, and that's what I'm trying to do. But I've done everything that the city has asked to do. Sam is my neighbor. I know he had had some problems getting through, done what he wanted to do, he went his way. Kurt has been cooking forever, and there's another guy, and I think, did you give him the petition of the people?
Yes.
That, you know, that want the food trucks, and then, I don't know, probably have several emails. So I think we have everything in order for the opportunity, but I just want to be able to take care of my family.
I understand.
You know, and, and, and not ask for that handout. I mean, I don't want to go ask Fred O'Neil for two hundred dollars. You know, I don't, I don't want to call Bob and say, "Bob, you know what? Can, can you help me pay my life bills?" He, he's seen me around, but he may not want to let me hold five hundred dollars, you know? And Chuck, I've seen Chuck around. You know, I don't want to ask Chuck for three hundred and fifty dollars, you know? I don't want to call Richard and say, "Richard." You know, I, I don't want to do that. You know, I, I don't want to do that. So, you know, I found the opportunity, and I think there is a, the community likes it because there, again, it, it gives us a chance as a community, because, you know, I can stand up here two years from now and tell the story, that, you know, I didn't have a job. And we can talk about how this food truck court group, how it supplied our needs, how it gave people the opportunity, you know, can be an incubator. So anyway, I just want to take care of my family and, and, and be an inspiration to the community.
I'll acknowledge Riverdale over there.
You've been.
Any questions? Any questions for me?
I'll make a deal with you. If we pass it.
Yes, sir.
Will you promise to tell the community we're not as bad as some of them think that we are?
I.
That's a, we make a deal.
As we say in the South, "I got you."
You got it. All right.
Will you promise to tell the community we're not as bad as some of them think that we are? That's a, we make a deal.
As we say in the South, I got you.
All right. We'll see how the vote goes.
Can I, can I ask you to help me with something? I don't know if they're going to pass this or not, but, um, but you're a great salesman.
Thanks, sir.
You ought to be selling more than fish sandwiches, I can tell you that, because you're wasting.
They wouldn't let me sell watermelons.
You're wasting your talent selling, selling fish sandwiches.
They wouldn't let me sell watermelons. I was like, you know what? I'm just trying to, I'm trying to provide.
But look, if they pass this, it's got a limit of three out there.
That's what I read there.
So you got to help us with that, because I'm telling you, our codes guys.
Yes, sir.
Spend their weekend chasing off the guy selling boiled peanuts and he's from Alabama and he don't know what a license is.
That's fair.
Or chasing off, they're all over the place and it's so hard to police. So what we don't need to find out, if they pass this, is that there are six food trucks out there or 20 food trucks out there. It needs to be three. And we're looking to you if, again, if they pass this to police that, because it's, those guys deserve a weekend off also. There's only two of them.
I understand.
They're the same guys doing the blighted houses and the, you know, cut your grass tickets. So anyway, thank you.
Yes, sir. But I'm where, I will work with the mayor and I work with city council. I love it. So I want to be Richard.
Uh, yes, sir.
Uh, I don't really know the details of the, uh, the bureaucracy hassle that you got or why or any of that kind of stuff, but I'm sorry that you went through that. Uh, the mayor and the city council are here to work for you. So, you know, if there's something we can do to help, call Brett. He's a great guy.
Oh, yeah. And there again, I, I have no complaints.
I went to the school of Hard Knocks, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've been down there. I've got a million dollar education.
Yeah, I was calling here to, uh, support the food trucks.
Okay, can you tell me your name?
My name is Yvonne.
Okay. And you just want us to know that you're in support of the food trucks?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for calling.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh, bye-bye.
Mayor Kason?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a motion to approve the, uh, food truck court at 136 North Park Street?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and second? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Mr. Wilson, you got your food court.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I can't wait to come get me a fish sandwich, either.
I'm saying the South, I got you.
No, no free ones.
No, no, no.
All right, we're down to resolution 12, 2020, which is the expansion of Main Street District. We have, um, Ms. April Saunders, who's going to come in, talk to us about that.
So I am here to talk to you guys about modifying the Main Street District boundaries. Um, our board met and would like to, um, for you guys to consider modifying those boundaries that extend east from the north-south Coleman Streets along Bankhead to Cedar Street. And then we'd be removing a portion that was there before that was mainly just residential. Um, the main, I guess, reason for this is that, you know, we have that corridor that kind of extends down through Bankhead that sort of meets up with our new Bankhead corridor. And that sort of little area there is in no man's land, if you, if you want to say. So, um, by adding them into the Main Street District, a lot of them are already considered a part of our downtown now. Many of the businesses already participate in a lot of the things that we do, but because they're not in our exact district boundaries, they're not eligible for certain program initiatives and, and funding and things like that, grants that we maybe do, um, and DCA things as well. So by extending this, that would bring them officially into our group. Um, and again, just sort of clean up some of the things that were existent before.
I think that's great and I appreciate the commission and the committee, uh, working on that because we want to give every business every opportunity that we can, uh, to participate in programs and have access to funding that may help them, um, in some type of, um, grant for renovations or whatever they need.
Right.
We went over this in our work session. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
Mayor Kason, I'd make a motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 12, 2020, which expands the boundaries of our Main Street program area in the, in downtown Carrollton. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none. This motion passes. Thank you again, Ms. Saunders, for working on this with our Main Street District. Okay, our next item is a budget amendment for equipment purchase. Mr. Grizzard?
Yeah, we, uh, our sanitation department operates in addition to all the rear loader garbage trucks and the front loader garbage trucks, we operate two roll-off trucks. And those are the trucks that pick up the big 40-yard cans and, uh, we have two and one of those, while it was sitting on the lot on Zizik Street, caught fire and burned up. And, uh, if it makes you any feel, feel any better about that having, happening, it had 260,639 miles on it. Now, the one that is still rolling has 316,976 miles. So, oh, Mike Green gets a lot of life out of his equipment, so, but it's beyond repair. We need to replace it and it is not in the budget. So we need you to approve this purchase and approve the budget amendment for it. These trucks are on state contract. It's a 2021 Kenworth T880 tandem axle roll-off truck, 168,550. So I'm asking you to approve both the purchase and the budget amendment.
Well, I don't know. That doesn't have many miles on it. I mean, you know.
I want you to think about, too, that's not 300,000 miles running up down the interstate. That's running around town, stopping and starting all day. So that's a lot of life.
Well, I, I don't have any complaints about any of the vehicles or the employees' use of the vehicles because, um, I know our fire chief was telling me how many, um, how old that some of the fire trucks were. And we've all sat here and heard about Tony, you know, hay wiring stuff together. So I, I don't think, I don't have any reservations about any recommendations of equipment that we, we need to purchase. Do I have a motion to, uh, approve the budget amendment and to purchase the roll-off truck?
Mayor Kason, I make a motion that we approve this budget amendment and I purchase the vehicle that's been mentioned.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment and to purchase the roll-off truck. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, then this, we've been, uh, we have approved for the budget amendment and the purchase of this roll-off truck. The next item is the vehicle purchase for the police department.
Joel, we're asking for three vehicles. Uh, one is for a school resource officer position that we asked to add. Uh, we're approaching 6,000 students now along with about 600 staff. We've got three. We'd like to have one in each school. Um, one is for one of our crime scene units. That's a 2001 model that's just fallen apart. And then they're finally going to make me replace mine. If you approve it, if you don't, then we won't have to. I've had it, uh, 16 years, but I'm fine with keeping it. Don't tell Dobbs I said that. No, seriously, it's, it's just, uh, you've written in it, the last thing you said was, did you get the smell out yet?
Joel's car is horrible. That's the nicest thing I can say about it. It's horrible.
Not that bad.
But he set a good example with it.
Anyway, that's what it, and, and I put it in here.
These roll-off trucks look better than Joel's car, I can tell you.
That, we had to order it by June, June 9th. That's not true because the plants have been shut down. We probably won't be able to order till September, October. So it'll be sometime next year before we'll even get them.
Okay, all right.
Well, Joel, we've sat here all night bragging on you and now you're expecting us to do something else for you.
And listen, I, I'm going to take a minute and brag on y'all. They don't know what went on behind the scenes up here the last week when we had a great command post and you all were either in person or on phone calling in texts and making sure we had what we needed. And so I just want to make everybody know, know where that they supported us 100% because we couldn't have done what we did without the resources that you provide to us. We try to be good stewards of those resources.
One other thing I meant to say earlier when I was talking about budget, Joel's training budget is more than four times the next highest department's training budget. So I ride him pretty hard about that. But after the last couple of weeks, I've not mentioned your training budget.
Well, and you know, I want to talk to this young lady in a minute.
At least we spent it.
And explain because, you know, that's the state standard. It's just the minimum requirement. We go way above and beyond and I think we should.
Yes.
Because I think citizens would hold us accountable if we didn't. Thank you.
And for those in the audience that may not know about the chief's 2005 Crown Vic, everybody in the, in the city that knows about it wants it when he retires. It's, uh, it's not that bad.
Okay, do we have a motion to purchase vehicles for the police department?
Yes, ma'am. I make a motion that we purchase the vehicles needed by our police department.
Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay. Hearing none. The motion passes for the purchase of the vehicles for the police department. Joel, I know, we can do a fundraiser with your car.
Yeah.
We'll see who wants to pay the most money for it.
It'll bring at least 50 bucks, I can tell you.
We can put that in your shop for your cop fund. Okay, all right. Next, we have, uh, employee handbook and that's Ms. Faith Pulling, our human resource director.
Good evening. So the next item is the employee handbook. And as y'all know, at your main work session, we discussed this. Our current handbook was last updated and revised in 2011. So there were lots of policies, uh, the family medical leave policy, the harassment policy, as well as others that we needed to update to become compliant with all the policies, rules, and regulations and to make sure it's legally accurate. So we feel like our new employee handbook is also more user-friendly for our employees, easier to read, easier to understand, and, um, we would like to put this in place if y'all agree.
Okay. And we were given a copy of that, um, at the work session and there were just a couple of things and we got those all fixed.
Just a few enhancements that we did. So the copy in your package is the, the new and the final copy.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I want to thank Ms. Pulling for her work on this because I know that working, and, and Mr. Connerly, uh, working on employee handbooks and making sure that you're in compliance with all the federal regulations, um, is not an easy task. So, because sometimes by the time, from the time you start to the time you finish, uh, those regulations have changed. Um, so, but we do appreciate y'all's work on that. So do I have, um, a motion to adopt the employee handbook that's been prepared and presented by our human resource director? Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none. The motion passed and we have a new employee handbook.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, buddy.
Okay, um, we will now have our finance director, Mr. Jim Triplet, present to you our 2020, 21 budget.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was feeling a little low when you, um, approved the new roll-off truck because I processed the paperwork on the old one that burned up when it was brand new. So it made me feel a little low.
Well, I'm sorry, Jim.
Jim has at least 300,000 miles on him, so.
That's true. That is true. Um, we're changing up a little of the process, the way we present the, uh, the recommended budget to you this year. You have before you tonight, um, a white working copy, a draft copy, um, and, um, that's the, the budget that we will be presenting in the public hearing. And then after your final vote, uh, in July, uh, you will be presented, uh, with the formal black binder, uh, the final approved budget. And so just wanted to make you aware of that. I always want to start off by thanking, thanking the, uh, the department heads and the employees, department directors that, um, actually put this budget together. My job is fairly easy. I assemble the numbers, assemble the documents and present it to you. Uh, the ladies and gentlemen in the departments, they're the ones that put the numbers together. They're the ones that execute the budget day in, day out throughout the fiscal year and they make it work. And I want to, uh, they deserve the lion's share of the credit and I want to give that, uh, to them, uh, that, that credit where it's due. Before we get going with actual numbers, uh, I do want to start out by saying, uh, December, January, um, we were experiencing a, a really good financial year, things popping along exactly as they should. And then something called the, the pandemic hit. And we all know that it changed every facet of our life, government, business, individual. Things changed drastically and they changed really quickly. And so as we started putting this budget together, as, um, I started helping Tim draft his transmittal memo to you, um, our goal was to present a budget to you, um, that addressed the needs of the city, but recognize the uncertainties that we're currently navigating. And, um, there are, the projections that we're giving you are our best estimates, but we have to recognize there are just some things that we simply don't know and we'll have to deal with as, as time plays out. We reformatted the budget just a little bit. We're going to be presenting, as we start off the budget, the three major operating funds, as you know, general fund, water fund, sanitation fund. Um, the three main operating funds proposed for FY '21, uh, total 51,000, uh, excuse me, 51,764, uh, 1,284. Um, that is composed of 28.5 million for the general fund, 17.1 million for the water fund, and just over 6,410,000 for the sanitation fund. That actually represents a decrease of 237,593, point 46% decrease from last year's, uh, operating budgets for general water sanitation of 52,1,877. Um, so as we're going to get into, um, looking at some revenue and expenditure assumptions for these three main operating funds, uh, I will start off saying we are being deliberately conservative in these revenues that we are estimating and projecting, uh, uh, for these funds. Not going to go over all of them for the sake of time. I just want to hit the highlights. But, uh, property tax, one of the major funding sources for the general fund. Um, we are proposing, uh, a revenue projection for property tax of, uh, uh, 4,125,000. That is actually, uh, a small increase, 2% over the current year's budget. But the reason for that is, um, we under-budgeted, we underestimated those revenues for last fiscal year due to, um, a delay in receiving the digest. And, uh, we intentionally held, uh, those revenue figures, uh, budget numbers for last year level because we didn't know what our digest was going to be. With all that being said, we've collected just over 4 million already in the current fiscal year. So, um, we, we wanted to be realistic in that number. Would like to point out this budget does not plan for a millage rate increase. Uh, it proposes, uh, no increase in the millage rate. Um, the ad valorem for the automobiles, vehicle title ad valorem tax, um, we are budgeting a 36% decrease, uh, for that line item for a couple of reasons. We've got some uncertainty, uh, vehicle sales due to the pandemic, but also, um, the distribution formula for these revenues was being reconsidered by the Georgia General Assembly, um, at the time they went into quarantine, just like everybody else. Title ad valorem tax revenue, um, since it's been in existence, the funding formula has been changed at least twice. And, um, uh, hopefully the General Assembly will look at this again, uh, to give the local governments, cities, and counties a more favorable distribution formula. Franchise utility fees, natural gas, electrical power, cable, um, we are budgeting a, um, 3% decrease, uh, 90,000 dollars, uh, to a total of 2,685,000. Our sales tax, um, we are budgeting a 4% decrease, which amounts to 200,000. Uh, our current budget's 4.6 million. We are projecting 4.4 million. Um, I have to say, as of right now, our sales tax is holding up. Um, and we're profoundly grateful for that, um, but we don't know what the future holds. And so we felt like that would be the prudent thing to do.
Shop local.
Exactly. Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, beer, beer and wine excise tax. Um, we are budgeting a 6% decrease in that. That amounts to 50,000 dollar decrease from 800,000 to 750,000. There again, that line item now is holding up, but we don't know what the future will hold as we go throughout the fiscal year.
You can raise that percentage, though, right?
I think we can. Yes, sir.
Just wanted to see if you was paying attention back there.
Our occupational tax revenue, we're holding steady at the current amount of $1.4 million. Our insurance premium tax, we are budgeting a small 2% increase, which amounts to $30,000 increase for a total of $1.9 million. Our county fire reimbursement that we get from Carroll County for the fire mutual aid agreements and whatnot remain the same at $716,000. As we talked about, our recreation and our arts department, we're budgeting approximately the same amount in user fees there in the current year's budget. Our fines and forfeitures budget, we are decreasing $100,000 from $1.1 million to $1 million even. This is the hard one, one of the hard ones, due to the pandemic, our interest income. We're dropping that from $250,000 to $50,000. That's a $200,000 decrease. On the City Reserve account in January, we were earning 1.4% on our money. This was liquid money we could get to anytime. In May, it's .35%. And so we really took a hit, and I don't see that going up anytime soon. So as you see, we're taking a very conservative approach, worst-case scenario. But I do have high confidence, as I think everyone here does, that the actual revenues will be better than projected if we stay on track on what we're seeing right here and now. And so we're hopeful that that will be the case. On the expenditure side, for the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Sanitation, our operating funds, it provides funds in here for salary adjustments, is deemed appropriate, and the number of that is 3% that we put in the budget for that. We are projecting an 8% increase in our health insurance premium, our group health insurance for our employees. That is an estimate. We will know that actual number probably in October, which will be effective January the first. One good thing on the expenditure side that we're very proud of, our property liability insurance premiums actually decreased by 18%. We are insured with the Georgia Interlocal Risk Management Agency. They are part of GMA. They presented us with a very competitive insurance package this year, and combined with their proposal, we increased our deductibles on all lines of coverage, which really helped us to get our premium down. And that's something we're very proud of, this budget cycle. Other highlights, in General Fund, we are due to upgrade our financial system, our N-code system. We've been running that system for 15 years without a major upgrade, and this is the year that we need to do that, and that's going to be about $80,000. That's in the budget. We have $500,000, as in years past, for paving, and that's not necessarily new paving projects, that's repairs, maintenance, curb, gutter, things that need to be done all over the city from time to time. Another highlight, because of the COVID situation, the economy, we are proposing that appropriation to other agencies be reduced to $100,000 from $200,000 to $100,000. On the Water Fund side of the operating budget, basically what I talked about, group health insurance, salary adjustments, property liability, all of that remains the same. But we have capital items for the Water Fund totaling just over $1.9 million, infrastructure upgrades, related equipment for water plant, wastewater plant, systems upkeep, line maintenance, things that we have to do on a year-to-year basis. Your budget also includes a proposed rate schedule for your information. On the sanitation side of the operating budget, one of the things, our landfill fees, we're proposing a $50,000 increase to $1,350,000. That's because we're getting a $1 per ton increase from the county in our landfill tipping fees, and that will be a total now of $43 a ton. So a lot of people don't realize how much it costs just to dump garbage every year. It's a pretty expensive proposition. That's basically the operating funds. The special revenue funds, the big one that we need to discuss tonight is the hotel motel. You know, the primary funding, the sole funding for this fund is the 8% hotel motel tax. They have taken a beating due to the pandemic. Basically, businesses decreased 50 to 75% on our local hotel motel operators. And accordingly, we are reducing our revenue projection from $820,000 to $700,000. That's a $120,000 decrease, 15%. I'm hopeful, and I'm seeing signs that that's coming back, and so we're behind these guys, and we sincerely hope the best for them. Hotel motel, as you know, funds our tourism events, things to, public relations, to bring people into the city, to spend money, to spend time here, to eat, to shop. And so we're very hopeful that that fund recovers, and again, we're trying to produce a, project a worst-case scenario. The final consideration of the budget will be at your July 13 meeting. No formal vote scheduled to be taken tonight. At this time, I will open up any questions you may have.
Jim, I just want to thank you, and especially for the property casualty liability insurance. I think that was great, that we could negotiate and work with them. And I know the budget is a big process, and I appreciate Tim and you and all the department heads for working hard to present a budget to us of this magnitude. Does anybody have any questions?
I want to make a couple of points, if you don't mind, because again, it's easy to gloss over this when you've lived in it for 16 years, like I have, but our sanitation department makes money. Our auditors tell us they don't see that anywhere. So our sanitation department actually makes money. Our Water Fund and wastewater fund transfers, Jim, don't let me say wrong, $7 million to the General Fund.
Round numbers, yes.
There are a lot of utilities around here where the General Fund is funding the utilities, and we're the other way around. So these are extremely well-run utilities. We have so little debt, I don't know how familiar you are with debt coverage ratios, but a good ratio was 1.8. Ours is over...
14.
14, okay. Oh, we've got about, what, $4 or $5 million debt on a 50-something million-dollar budget?
We have about $5.5 million in the Water Fund, long-term debt.
And something that just frustrates, I'm an engineer, I'm not an accountant, and accounting frustrates me. It ought to just be simple math, but something I want to point out, and I know your eyes are going to glaze over with this, but if we have a $20 million water budget and a $30 million General Fund budget, if we're moving $5 million from that Water Fund budget to that General Fund budget, that $5 million shows in both line items. So it's, if you think of what you're spending as a total on the city, it's $5 million high if you're transferring that over. So I know that is the most boring thing you ever heard, but that drives me crazy, that we look at the accountant in the back room laughing, that we have to do that. So this $53 million budget is really more like $45 million when you take those transfers out, so I'll shut up at that point.
All right. Thank you, Jim, for your presentation.
If I could, while I have the podium, if you would allow me to, I would like you to introduce our new Finance Director, Assistant Finance Director.
I will.
Kevin Bush.
All right.
He started last week, June the 1st, and Kevin, he's not new, I view him coming, more coming home to the city. He's a Carrollton native, grew up here. He has his Masters of Accounting from University of West Georgia. He's a CPA. He worked on our audit for many years. And so, and he's been in private industry for the last several years, but I've known Kevin for a long time, I think the world of him. He's a great person. He's hugely talented, and this old man here is glad to have him on board to help him. So, and I just, I'm thrilled. Thank y'all for allowing this to happen, and I just wanted to introduce Kevin to you.
With two CPAs on the third floor, that is an exciting place.
I just want to say thank you. Like Jim said, I've lived here all my life. I love Carrollton, and so just the opportunity to get to serve our city provides good stewardship. I think that's what we all want. We're entrusted as public officials with what we're given for the taxpayers, and it's our responsibility to use that prudently, and so I just want to continue to use the talents that God's given me to provide that for our city. So I thank you for your trust and look forward to working with all of you.
Kevin, could you find us something better than .35% interest?
I don't know, maybe we get some bids, I don't know. Get those banks competing against each other.
Well, Kevin...
It's tough right now.
We're awful glad to have you on board, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you all.
Okay.
I just wanted to say thanks to Jim and your staff, and Tim, the city, for cutting the budget and bringing us in at a minus or a decrease from last year, these tough times. I think that was definitely the right thing to do, and maybe the Times Georgian will report that tomorrow. Thank you.
Yes, there are definitely uncertain times. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the Board appointment for our Historic Preservation Commission. We have two seats. We have Ms. Erica to present those to us.
Yes, Kelly Anderson and Carolyn Acoch both have served on the Historic Preservation Commission, and their terms expired on May 1st of this year. Carolyn has expressed an interest to continue to serve. However, Kelly would like to rotate off and give somebody else the opportunity, due to some other obligations that she had. I reached out to Catherine Minor at the suggestion of the elected officials, I think during the work session, and she lives on Rome Street, and she's a resident of Rome Street, right across from the newly renovated library. And she has indicated that she would be willing to serve if you should so choose her. Her term would be retroactive, back to May 1st, and it would go through May 1st of 2023. I'm not sure if you're aware, but on the HPC, there are five members, and the other three members are Tom Ford, Kristy Garrett, and Ally, or Allison Rossborough. At this time, staff recommends that you reappoint Carolyn Acoch, who has indicated that she wants to continue to serve, and then appoint Catherine Minor to the HPC through May of 2023.
Okay. So we have, we have a motion for the appointment of Catherine Minor and Carolyn Acoch to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Mayor Case, and I'd be happy to make a motion to approve Carolyn Acoch and Catherine Minor. They're great people.
All right. Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay. All right. Well, we have two, well, we have a new member and the reappointment of a previous member. So at this time, do I have a motion that we go into executive session to discuss personnel?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and just for those who may not know, we will go into executive session, we will come back out, and then we will adjourn the meeting. So at this time, we will go to the second floor conference room.
And staff can leave. I only need...
Oh, absolutely.
I need Jim Triplet and Chuck.
Okay.
Haley, you don't have to stay for this. Are you... You...
We don't need you.